Well, that'll be looked at every year anyways. And this is just one you're agreeing on, right?
Yeah.
So you just have to revisit it every year just to see basically if it's in there. Nice if the... I don't want anybody to show you news. It would. You'd help out with a lot.
Oh, it would. You're right. Because the reason we set that up is a third, a third and a third.
I think I haven't figured the ducts. If you went off what we had right now, I think it was like seventy-seven thousand each or something like that. The green lights all over.
I mean, it's red or blue. I'm not picking up anything. I never heard that thing kick in.
Oh, never mind. My bad.
Were you muted over there?
Yep.
I had trouble with a web doctor at one building there in Springfield. She kept breaking up. It wasn't my side because the life of TV going, it's all on the internet. So I knew we were good. It was my sugar doctor anyway. Oh geez. What did Dave come back with? He got the one car and he got nine more coming in. When do they come?
He was calling for transport for the eight Arango's. They made it to Houston on a rail yard.
Houston, Missouri or Houston, Texas?
Houston, Texas. They come in by rail there. Because they go from the factory to a place that puts the spotlights on them. And then they get shipped to a rail yard in Houston. And he was sending transport down there to pick those up. So they should be here this week. And I can't remember...
He said a two-week turnaround, didn't he, for him? Once he got them?
No. He said, oh, yes, once he got them.
Once he gets them, it's two weeks turnaround.
Yeah. The Tahoe was coming from somewhere northeast. And he bought four of them because they were the only four left. So apparently with the border deal going on with Canada, they're having trouble getting parts across. So they've suspended orders on the Tows. So he found four. And he just went, wow, of course, we don't need one. And it'll last the rest of the month though. It didn't be black also. Morning.
Do you build on some...
Doing good. How's everybody today?
Good. How's Mike?
Pretty good, pretty good. It's Monday. I'll try. Let's see. Just peachy.
Really? All right. This time we'll call the regular county commissioner and order surf right before. Send a general few minutes.
I'll say yes.
On favor?
All right.
Any...
Not that I'm worried. We haven't had any kind of... Don't need anything for this one?
No.
Thanks, Mac. Thank you.
Mr. Parker, come in please.
And I think Casa has phoned in the lobby.
You got a shift list here?
Yes. As far as you're concerned, we're good on this first year.
Still got the thirty-three thousand. That's going to come through then. On the books of the first... Roughly thirty-three thousand, isn't it?
Mm-hmm. Wow. Estimate, yeah.
Estimate? Does he know where you're going?
No. Not that he's told me.
He coming in this morning?
Hmm? He coming in this morning. Well, that's why I was just... We had that deal over the weekend, so I was making sure he wasn't taking us on that.
Okay. And where we got seventeen thousand from Cole County inmates?
Yeah.
You have anything?
Just observing. I have court.
Your court's already over?
I wouldn't have even came. I'd be at the office being productive. But the state did let me know that they got a diagnosis on Thursday. So I came for a pre-lunch, but it never happened.
I'm waiting that there's a witness and then all of a sudden they say, oh, you got it worked out.
Fricks, have you been down there with the sheriff on this?
I've been there.
Is that the one where there's a vehicle?
I got a call on that yesterday.
Camper's supposed to be located right here. The county maintenance end right here past Union's house. And the way we take it, the lady owns both sides of this right here. The let's guy back here is wanting to put in some mobile homes or campers or something. He's wanting her to move her camper, but if it's not a county road and she owns all around her...
Right. So the... You guys are only needed to here?
Yeah, somewhere right in here. I'll have to go down in here a little bit and mileage it down there to where we run out of it.
Yeah, because I know he was talking about where she had put that trailer. Yeah, it was right there. And the gentleman that's wanting this, that owns this property, to do what you were saying. He actually offered to clear a spot for her and to move to there. So now, we were waiting on to see just exactly where you guys attended as far as...
Well, the old... Old engine here used to be the old sawmill. They actually stopped right there. Never ever stopped this pass specied.
Because there was a sawmill. So was there an easement prior to her buying that?
That's what he was thinking. The landowner was thinking that there was an easement to move there.
I'd say there was because the sawmill was operating right now.
Had a wagon too there. Yeah. Is that an easement? Transfer or get?
I would say.
Depends on how it's written, but yeah, I would say so.
Oh, it worked. You're right. Because the reason we set that up is a third, a third and a third.
I think I have one of the dummies. If you want off what we had right now, I think it was like seventy-seven thousand each or something like that. The green lights all over.
I'm not picking up anything. I never heard that thing kick in.
Oh, never mind. My bad.
Were you muted over there?
Yep.
I had trouble with a web, a web, a web doctor that worked over there. Springfield. She kept breaking up.
Yeah.
It wasn't my side because the life of TV going, it's all on internet. So I knew we were good. It was my sugar doctor anyway. You got the one car and you got nine more coming in?
Yes.
When do they come?
Uh, he was calling for transport for the, the eight Durangos. They made it to Houston on rail yard.
Houston, Missouri or Houston, Texas?
Houston, Texas. They come in by rail there. Cause they, they go from the factory to a place that puts the spotlights on them. And then they get shipped to a rail yard in Houston. And he was sending transport down there to, uh, to pick those up. So they should be able to swing and I can't remember.
He said a two-week turnaround, didn't he? For once he got them?
No. He said, oh, yes, once he got them.
Once he gets them, it was two weeks turnaround.
Yeah. The Tahoe was coming from somewhere northeast. Uh, and he, he bought four of them because they were the only four left. So apparently with the, the border deal going on with Canada, they're having trouble getting parts across. So they've suspended orders on the, uh, on the Tows. So he found four. And he just went, wow, of course we don't need one. And it'll last the rest of them though. It didn't be black also. Morning.
Do you build on some?
Doing good. How's everybody today?
Good. How's Mike?
Pretty good, pretty good. It's Monday. I'll try. Let's see. Just speech.
Really? All right. This time we'll call the regular county commissioner and order surf right before. Send a general few minutes.
I'll notice. I'll see you.
On favor?
All right.
Any, uh, uh, our, uh, uh, no?
Uh, not that I don't worry. Don't need anything for this one?
No. Thanks, Mac. Thank you.
This rocker from the down please.
And I think Casa has phoned in the lobby.
You guys think this here?
Yes. As far as you're concerned, we're good on this first year.
Still count the thirty-three thousand. That's gonna come through then. On the books of the first, roughly thirty-three thousand, isn't it?
Mm-hmm. Well.
Estimate, yeah.
Estimate. Does he know where you're getting thirty-three? Did he say?
No. Not that he told me.
He coming in this morning?
Hmm?
He coming in this morning?
Well, that's why I was just, um, we had that deal over the weekend. So I was, I was making sure I wasn't taking this off that.
And how many got? Seventeen thousand from Cole County inmates.
Yeah. There's eleven.
Eleven thousand, eleven thousand. I mean, that can be used for a period later on in the year. I mean, you go, I know it goes with general revenue.
If it's not already been designated as revenue. I mean, yeah, you're talking about to do a budget amendment, you're going to need additional revenue above and beyond what you've already budgeted.
Right.
Um, appreciate it. Thank you.
Is Casa coming in? We're out there. There's a bunch of them.
Oh, no. All right. Thank you. Appreciate it.
They're all circled up out there. I don't know.
What's that?
They've circled their wagons in the lobby?
It's Casa presentation.
They're coming in here, right?
Mm-hmm. I don't know if they're coming in here. It looks like they're having a presentation outside.
Pretty sure it's just swearing and they're going up to judge at his court.
No, it's a proclamation.
Oh, it's a proclamation.
When I walked past, the mayor was reading what looked like a proclamation.
Yeah, Jennifer's not really, um, yeah, three point three won't be here. You have anything?
Just observing. I had a court and it didn't end quickly.
Your court's already over?
I wouldn't have even came. I'd be at the office being productive, but the state did let me know that they got a diagnosis on Thursday. So I came for a pre-lunch, but never happened.
And we quit and if there's a witness and then all of a sudden they say, oh, you can go home. We already got it worked out.
Fricks, have you been down there with the sheriff on this?
I'll tear it off. Is that the one where there's a vehicle? I got a call on that yesterday.
Camper's supposed to be located right here.
Right.
The county maintenance ends right here past Union's house.
Okay.
And I, the way we take it, the lady owns both sides of this right here. The let's guy back here is wanting to put in some mobile homes or campers or something.
Right.
He's wanting her to move her cam, but it's not a county road.
Right.
And she owns all around her.
Right.
I mean, we, yes.
So the, you guys are only needed to here?
Yeah, somewhere right in here. I'll have to.
Okay.
Go down in here a little bit and mileage it down there to where we run out of it.
Yeah, cause I know he was talking about the shit where she had put that trailer. Yeah, it was right there. And the gentleman that's wanting this, that owns this property to do what you were saying. He actually offered to, uh, clear a spot for her and, and to move to there. So, um, now we were waiting on to see just exactly where you guys attended as far as.
Well, the old, uh, old register used to be the old sawmill.
Right.
They actually stopped that and had to never ever stop this pass specied.
Cause there was a sawmill.
Yeah.
So was there an easement prior to her buying that or?
That's what he was thinking. The landowner was thinking that there was an easement to, to their price.
I'd say there was because the sawmill was operating right now.
Yeah.
Had a wagon too there.
Yeah.
Is that an easement? Transfer or get?
I would say.
Depends on how, depends on how it's written, but yeah, I would say so.
I would think, but you know, they, they may be running.
Cause usually when they sign, sign those land titles, it puts in there, there's easement. Uh, is this the drilling bit or is this a different?
Uh, that's, that's actually the part of the line.
Say anything in the description about an easement?
Uh. Ah, it's. So we track B, this one.
Well, so.
Yeah, the water's out of the case in there. Yeah, ones on the side are, they're all just sort of here. Yeah, B, the B track B or A two. Gonna be passing all the northwest. They mentioned something about Trophy Lane. Uh, yeah, old highway sixty-six. So this is forty-four. Okay, so this is on the southern side of that. Right away of interstate. Forty-four on a curve turn to the right with an arc length of four and a, four and ten feet. Okay, so that's describing this line here. It might be. See this measurement right here?
Yeah.
A hundred and ninety-one, um, feet right there from there to there. That would tell me that that's probably is the easement line right there. Okay, and north is a hundred and ninety-one feet. Way to southwest, really right of way line of Trophy Lane.
Along the south end of the brown right. I've been here for a while.
Yep.
We always do try to keep before they're coming out of interstate out of like the spotlight. So people don't go.
So that's right here to here. So according to here to here, it'll be a hundred and ninety-four, um, foot six one feet. But it doesn't tell the length. From here to here, whoops, from here to here.
And then it acts like Trophy Lane comes, comes around here and comes on out way over there.
Well, but I bet this is counting the going underneath the bridge. It's kind of going underneath that bridge right there.
Two girl turning into girls, these girls.
Yeah.
Three.
Yep. Oh, so they ride away line to southwest highway line Trophy Lane is located somewhere ninety-seven hence on a curve turning to the left with an arc. To the truth, places became subject to all easements of Rex. So there is an easement, but it's not, it doesn't, it's not specifically stated in here. It's also subject to the old right of way of twenty-sixty-six.
An old normal. Backside. So.
Amber was supposed to play.
Do you have?
I don't have. She's bringing everything she said.
Got it. Got it. I got you. All right. Do you want us to sit down?
Yeah, or.
Stand up?
You can stand exactly.
Huh? What do we got?
Shout for good.
Just for you, Sheriff.
A word.
Wow!
Yes, yes.
I know.
You look ten years younger.
Here's a mistake.
He grabbed the wrong cutter when he was doing this.
Oh, my gosh. Hey, what happened?
All right.
I'm Jen Thomas.
Jen Thomas from, from Casa Amber? Is it the capital of it?
She is, yes.
Okay. This is a proclamation for Child Abuse Prevention Month. The proclamation from the county, this is whereas every child of Plaski County deserves to grow up safe, nurturing and stable environment, free abuse and none neglect. And whereas child abuse and neglect are significant social concerns that have a long-term psychological, emotional and physical effects on children. And whereas preventing child abuse and neglect is a community responsible, responsibility that depends on the active involvement and support of all citizens. And whereas effect, effective child abuse prevention programs succeed because of a strong partnership among families, social circus agencies, schools, law enforcement agencies, military services, medical professionals and local business and civil groups. And whereas empowering families with resources and education is essential to prevent child abuse before it happens. And whereas court-appointed special advocate Casa of South Central Missouri plays a vital role in advocating for the best interest and views in neglected children within the court system, ensuring their voices are heard and their needs are prioritized in the child's welfare system. And whereas during the month of April, Casa of South Central Missouri in collaboration with other organizations will engage in activities to raise awareness, provide education, offer support to prevent child abuse neglect within around the county of Plaski. And whereas all citizens are encouraged to play a vital role in preventing child abuse neglect through simple yet impactful actions such as volunteering their time, mentoring a child, supporting families in need, providing a meal to a family offering rest to a parent or caregiver, or advocating for policies that prioritize child safety and well-being. Now therefore, we do hereby proclaim April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Plaski County. We are all citizens to work together to promote the safety, the health and the well-being of our children, to support families, to create a nurturing environment where they, every child can survive. In testimony wherefore, we have the Hector. I got my glasses on.
Hearing two.
Hearing two, set our hand and affix our hearts to the future of our children and families in the great state of Missouri and the county of Plaski this month, April twenty twenty-five.
Thank you, sir.
Hmm. Yep.
Okay, and I need to take a shit in the bathroom.
And you all did get the hours for the grant?
Um, she heard. Thank you.
Uh-huh. The other county's office officer was not gonna use them. We get a new set coming in, so we donated them to Casa.
Love that. That's amazing. Thank you.
Can we get her picture?
Sure.
Okay.
We can do it out there if you want instead of in here.
You don't want to.
Or you want to do it. So this room is, they don't have a lot of space.
Okay, we can go out there.
Hello, Russ. How you doing?
Uh, I respond, you're, you're getting scanned for what you're about to.
Oh, I was listening to that one scanner. Nothing, but I get on the app. I looked at this, the push site. I got every code in there.
We're gonna need to, um.
I got the app.
This is all the eight hundred dollars.
I got the three hundred dollar one.
Uh, you got, you got the analog scanner. Need a digital scanner. It's gonna cost you eight hundred dollars. Uh, the, the app is useless.
Yeah, it's all, it's the only thing I can pick up from.
The, uh, you might be able to find used one available, but the analog scanner is essentially useless. Most of the utilities around here have gotten grants and not created digital. You pretty much, only people still use, still use the analog round here at Pirate Department because it's too expensive and we're all buying Pirate Department stuff.
I put that on the shopping list.
I know the price of the used, but new will have to be added.
No. I would take it in a murder response.
Me too. I wanna watch.
Or of course we could ask the chief deputy.
Let me guess, Darryl, you filled your cup up?
Uh, I'm sorry, sir. Yeah, should be still coffee there for you. That's at least one cup.
What do you guys read, Darryl?
Scanner, code. For the county, the main one.
There's an app.
That's when I got the app. That's what I was just, I got. High-speed scanner. I can hear on the, hear it on the app, but I can't hear it on scanner. I scan all piece codes. It's a barricad.
That's because we're on most of them.
On the what?
We're on most of them.
I'm a hot leaf juice guy, hot bean juice guy. How early do you leave you wake up?
You do about three.
Oh, it is? Since I remember I wake up about five-thirty, I have my first cup, uh, seven, eight. It's actually better for you if you don't have caffeine within the first hour when you wake up. Caffeine's more faculty to you. Close all day up.
Just drink more.
I've heard people say that, but that's also why I like tea. It's got a slow burn to it. I don't like coffee. It just hit you.
Yeah, make sure. I love you one, don't they? That's like five, eight in the phone, Z-mate.
You can have coffee.
I love, you do an inventory sheet on, on the two that you're disposed on.
I'm sure you might have to check, make sure that there's grounds there before you just fix it.
Okay. I should, I should know one for the Ford pickup and I did one for the Tahoe and I did the intake of the, uh. Okay. Yeah, if you'll notice, so I did.
Every time we had to take the vehicle by insurance, it wasn't another one.
One.
Or we skipped one. We had one of the road grader we paid for a year and a half and never had it. It was long, got traded in. I remember that. Year and a half we paid the insurance on the road grader. We didn't even know.
Do you have a question with that though?
Yeah.
Cause I've got sheets and sheets of vehicles that we've gotten rid of. Think of Crime Star. Is there a reason?
Transferred out?
I mean, like the ones we sold at the auction. I've still got all those in person. Is there any need for me to keep those?
I, I asked some questions about what it does have on it. Pick up things, yes.
品德性. Well, that's, that's why I ask you guys. I don't know either.
The thing I want to.
As far as our end, I don't know.
Our end, I don't know, but I don't know what the state requirement is for you.
The only thing requires for us is any reports or evidence of vehicles or anything else like that.
Anything, anything that leaves, we just need to.
Good brand unit.
I just need the paper where the sheriff signed it says where it went. What, this disposition.
Yeah, which is the sheet, but I would, I would say Crime Star just does it in case a vehicle shows up, they run the VIN number. All your, all your cars are in there.
Yeah.
That's all data, data stores that I gotta keep.
Hmm.
There's gotta be a Crime Star guru out there somewhere that can answer that.
Check with another county. Just get ahold of another county and check with them.
What are you looking at me for? I just wanna know if I can get rid of the data that I.
You might check with a couple of other counties and see what they do.
Yeah.
That's the easiest way. On our end, it's when the paper comes that I sign, it says you. That takes it out of us. So if the auditor comes in, they're saying, what'd you do with this? And I'm like, well, this is what they did.
Yeah, I don't see anything that does, as far as the record, where the vehicle, you know, who signs titles and stuff like that.
I didn't get snappy, did you?
I thought I did, but really what happened is props you to just say, you're wasting my time and I'll tell you. They already got a damage. Figures it's already here. Might as well see what happens.
Do you want to read the name? Any questions, Paul?
No.
There any seven layers there?
Just give it like the bottom layer, say five times.
Hmm?
They probably put the bottom. Five times. Uh, we'll go over your memorandum of understanding. I read it all. Only question I have is a thirty-three thousand dollar user response fee. Where are you coming up with? Now, I know this is a one-year contract, but if it goes, keeps going, that's money that we gotta come up with somehow. Cause originally I thought they were gonna take care of all of it. Now they've taken the twenty percent.
Well, they've had, they, they briefed the twenty percent. When they were here.
Yeah, that's what I remember. I remember we were gonna have to come up with twenty percent.
That's actually.
Which you figured out to be roughly eleven thousand per officer.
Yeah, cause you came up with the number.
Yeah, I come up with the number. And I mean, if we, if we use, or what we got on General Avenue, my question is this. It's the little savings we got. Cause you go down the road, you don't have savings no more. And then you're gonna have to cut something out of your money.
Mm-hmm.
And it's. I don't want you to get where like we got a sheriff, three sheriffs to go. Before you had five employees, you had to let go. At the beginning of the year, we say, we don't have the money for you. We let you go. I'd like to have a plan. A year down the road, two years down the road, three years down the road. I wanna have a plan on where you're gonna do this. By the way, and come Christmas time, we tell somebody where you're gonna have a job January first. Man. Have you thought anything about that? What was your idea?
Well, the idea was gonna come from, uh. For the, it, it's gonna have to come out of, obviously several lines this year for, uh, but this year won't be. Won't be as bad as, as next year, that, as far as the budget line. Uh. We do have one deputy that has been selected for the task force, the warrant task force. Uh, it could be pulled out of there for next year. Cause the state police is going to pay for his position, I just don't know when that takes effect.
Right.
He's in training right now.
So he's gonna be starting here for the next few months?
Yes, he, yes.
So his salary is.
He's still.
The state, is that what you're saying?
Yes, he's still assigned, he's still assigned to me, paid for by the task force. Which is the governor's, uh, relentless pursuit task force.
Right. And. So that line would be open to use out of that line?
That's forty-one thousand. For his line.
You know where that line would come out of?
I don't know who the deputy is.
Well, I can't really say, but I don't wanna say it here in front of Darryl or.
Uh, my hands are off the keyboard, uh.
The general revenue. Okay, then it is law, it's law enforcement tax.
But it is there. It is there, that's my, that's what my only question is, it is there, right?
Then we have to do a budget amendment to change it and move it out of that, though, right?
Why are we moving it? I'm not understanding, if the state's gonna pay for it, then isn't the state gonna pay his salary?
Yes.
Yes, yes, so his salary.
I don't know if they pay us, or they just directly pay him, is what I'm saying.
So there would be money in his, in his line.
The salary line, I.
Right.
But like Rex said, are they, are they? Basically reimbursing the county for his salary, or are they going, is he going to be considered a state employee and they, if he can, they pay him?
So one way or another, they're gonna bring in, the money comes in later, right?
Yes. We just, it's, that's not gonna happen right away, I'm paying for him right now.
Right. Okay, but the money will be coming in for that.
Yes.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that there's a line there, where money's coming out of. I don't wanna get to the end of, end of the year and just say, well, I don't have the money to, I've seen, been there, done that a few times. And, and, and it causes her to have to move a lot of stuff around and. And then, and then. We'll do that later, cause they'll say, well, I was gonna take it out of this, well, you already took it out of that and this, and. I don't wanna get to that point, cause then we get, I don't wanna say attitudes toward each other, just making sure where we're at before we get there. So okay, well, we got money in the line, I'm, I'm good with it.
I'll make a motion when you send the memorandum.
On the favor?
Alright.
All of it.
No, we were not signing in different spots. Thirty-first.
This is our contract with Dixon. We're going to take over their dispatch services. They're, they currently fall under the city of Saint Robert, but they've had, they wanna come to county.
We'll put this on Thursday.
Okay.
Can you get a copy of that? Look, put it on, if it wasn't on this agenda for today, so. Got to be on the twenty-five after twenty-five. Twenty-four hours, man. Twenty-five.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm twenty-five.
Over cheating and putting my name down.
There you are.
Yeah, yeah.
You're at least covered, I guess.
Yeah, making sure we're covered. I've seen some organizations do it without the twenty-five.
Thought I sent that up with this.
You need a copy of that. Well, you have an extra copy, don't you?
I do have an extra copy.
So what's this?
That's the copy you just signed.
Oh, you want another copy?
Wait a minute, hold on, is that?
Yeah, that's it.
One voting day.
Can you stay?
Make sure about.
Yeah, maybe we'll be on the. We're watching, I choose to.
Did that take someone?
Yes.
We've dealt with the radios, get them back online so they can at least communicate with, uh. With their dispatcher and communicate with us on their car radios. And then we got another meeting this week with our app people and.
How much is mules per, is it per use or the?
Per year.
Per year?
Yeah, I think it was two.
I thought ninety-one was charging us per.
Per use, what do you mean by per use, is there a time that we log into it, or what?
Well, when.
Or per user?
Well. I was thinking back to when nine-one-one took dispatcher for thirty days, or five, or.
That's their.
Mules was their co, yeah.
That's their charge.
Yeah.
It's just a yearly.
There's, yeah, there's just a yearly deal.
Cause it was a lot more than eight thousand, Alex probably made that.
Oh, yeah. Ours is not.
What are you watching, girl?
An ad showed up, I'm trying to, trying to post your stuff, an ad showed up from a bank. First, first community state bank sent me an ad, if you want to know.
But no, our, our normal mules is, is the same, it, they, nine-one-one would charge us for basically the use of their. Their dispatcher plus, you know, whatever.
Which I'm already doing, everybody, mules, tracker, Dixon and, uh. Richland. I've already got a mules agreement with them.
Yeah.
I was actually fixing somebody's smoker with it, I was on the ground, fixing a smoker. The first bay was clamping grillers out of somewhere south of Atlanta. They ran the field, they got the fourth highest score ever recorded. I've not heard of the number they had. Yesterday was. Jay B leg out of Illinois. They're usually the top two or three. I don't know where I like my home, but they, well, how they do it, they do two contests every weekend plus travel, I was. A mile from the place, no, I was wore out. But I made all my turnings, it's all mattered. Yeah, I could say.
So with those three, uh.
Probably somewhere like that. I've tried to remember, but I finished sixteen.
You're gonna add them in, they're, you're gonna add them into the budget for three line?
They have their needs, they're all exactly the same.
Or?
Yeah, that will be, those will be added to LET, and so then those funds will go into the law enforcement tax. Do we need to make an amendment on that because we add those to it, or? Um. Probably so, yes. So do we need to put that on the budget for, or, or not on the budget, on, uh, the agenda for Thursday? Not yet.
That won't go until it happens.
So do we need to have it done before they send us the first money? Okay. And then will Mac, sorry.
Cause I gotta get three heat guns spun up. So I can't do anything, so I get money in there.
Right. And they're still paying money right away.
And they're paying, what, quarterly, uh, any quarterly solos?
Yeah, I think that's what it says.
Quarterly.
So now, when, when Mac takes that money, does that get, does that show up in that particular line, or does it just show up as? In the LET? People show up in LET.
Yeah.
Just as a normal revenue? How do we distinguish what the part that's coming in, cause it's supposed to be flagged for those three officers, so should it not go into?
You'll have a revenue line in Elliot that comes in, where it'll say for that, then you're gonna have. The three dozen dude.
So that year mark will go in for those, um, three.
You'll know, you'll have a revenue line, it'll say, it'll go into law enforcement, but it should, it should have where it came from.
It should say payment from court.
Right, right.
Something similar. More than likely, what we'll do is create a revenue line that will say, that was my question.
Yes, that way you'll know the revenue did come in, that way you can watch, make sure you do get it.
Yeah.
And the expense. If you're following it real time down there, whenever Mac receives it, puts it in that, you can, it'll show when you print out with him, it'll show it in.
We just get that report whenever he gets it.
Yeah, I, I think a real time, I've got.
Our stuff internal now will be real time. Cause I finally got that, that up last week, Friday, actually. Saw the, the real time budget sheet. For, I just have to have, um, Kim fill in. It's a live document. Like a.
I'll see Google.
Yeah, okay. It's a live document, so.
So I'm looking back on.
I was trying to go on and follow it, it's, I was trying to follow it on. He knew, he's actually. He doesn't have to, he doesn't have to, he felt comfortable.
I'm just trying to keep up your, what you.
It's hard to do, it's hard to do.
No, what you called me, you were being high tech, I had, uh. You told me that we were, that I was being really high tech with this stuff.
Yeah, I'm not used to that, I'm used to, I'm used to, you know, I ain't gonna go there. Would tell you right now.
Blah, 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 blah.
I just, I was explaining to him, I said, it's kinda, I'm getting to you weird because somebody's on top of something. Real time versus a month later going, well, um, you remember plenty of that, don't you, David? When they would move something, I didn't remember that, so I had to sign it every time they moved something, cause I knew down the road, they're gonna, we didn't do that. Uh, yeah, you did. I had a lot of that. Like you guys follow everything? They just follow here, there, and I'm either.
They're doing a drill at ten fifteen. So I'm not kicking off.
How's you guys going on?
Pretty good. Getting both of this stuff done.
I imagine that St. Lawrence has a problem with that in their park from here.
Church people had to drive over. We were going to church yesterday morning.
So it's just gonna land us somewhere.
Not really. You paint it today and it'll give them a clean sheet to work on.
Well, yeah, we took the bolts out of the garden.
Took one of the big beams off.
I'm down there painting it this morning.
Took a beam off a bridge?
Yeah, they took the bolts and.
I done over in Rochester, took thirty foot beam off.
I guess they needed the bolts.
Yeah, they were checking on. The one, the second bridge?
Yeah.
They'll, they get a lot of bolts here. They catch them in there. The weight for the bolts, they catch it in.
Are you serious?
Oh, serious, yeah.
I had to get the beam out of South Dakota. It's, it's a Monod inspected bridge and they told me I had to put it back. The way it was required. So I traced down who, where the beam come from and the beam come, so I said, can they almost just cut me a beam? It has to be the same treated beam and.
Oh, wow. They probably got it from y'all.
Probably cheap too.
And I don't remember, sixteen bolts and. There's, there was a little spacer, a treated spacer that went in between the beam and the main bridge support. I remember each spacer was like fifty-five dollars.
Man.
I don't remember how, but.
How big is that beam?
Thirty foot.
What's the width?
It was ten inches, ten, twelve, twelve inches this way and ten inches this way.
No one saw him carry it away?
This was last year, right?
It's, well, it's been a couple of years ago. It was, it was actually done before I got in office and then we, when I got in office, we repaired it, so. So that was two years ago. There's a wood beam.
He's on, he's on. Yeah, I did get one.
It's a natural, it's a, natural wood bridge.
Cause I'm gonna stay three weeks.
That would be shit.
You know, here, here's my, here's my place, it's gotta ride away, but I know where we've stopped for years, Grading. I mean, it, the mine is standing that right through the middle of that sawmill, and I mean, the town, the town's never maintained. But she, she owns on both sides where the tanker's sat them and he's gotta get rid of his, so I mean, that could be a touch of situation.
That's, one of, that's why I held off on. It's, it shows a road. It, I guess it's never been maintained and I probably, way before I moved here, it wouldn't.
Is it past the real life part of that room where it comes around that corner?
Comes down to where it narrows down, went into.
I remember a few of the old people with the kid that lived down there in that watered house. They had a well there and around a garden hose.
Is that the rock house?
No, it was an old trailer was down there one time.
Yeah, it's not there now. The remnants are.
I got called to do some plumbing work there. The water went, it, it was come from a hose from a well. It went through the bathroom window and it stuck in the tank. It's all a thing. But it's gone now.
The whole point of that, from what I understand, he wants to turn that back into a road. That he'll maintain.
It was a private drive from there on in, isn't it? That's the way I assume it, but that would be totally up to Kevin on what it was.
Is that one of those deals that, um?
There was a business there.
I mean, there is a telephone pole, or yeah, an electric line right there in the middle of the road as well. It's been there for, it wasn't just pla- it wasn't placed there by the owner there now. It's been there. So that would have to be removed too.
So they're, cause they used to do that, cause, uh, Breaky Road, for example. Landowners actually owned to the middle of the road. They just took out through. So the, the actual, uh, plots actually say that they own to the middle of Breaky Road. All the way down through there. And the county just maintained that road for next amount of years and now it just ended up being there. But if you actually look on the plot, the landowners actually owned the middle of the road. Yep. But those old county roads were that way. There were several of those.
Were you bringing them down?
Uh, well, at one point, yes, it, it was abandoned, but then it got reopened. So I think this is gonna be basically the same kind of case. It was just a.
Somebody owns it.
Okay, no, he, he brought this down.
Somebody's paying taxes on it.
Cause it's skirting, it's coming down and it's skirting up this, up this property line right now. He just changed the road.
To me, it's probably gonna end up being a civil once it gets in there. It'll be on that easement.
See what that easement is? Cause according to that, there is one. It was filed in ninety-seven.
But if it, I don't, I'm not a lawyer, but if it was filed in ninety-seven and property was resold. If an easement was done in ninety-seven and the property is resold later on, is that easement still carry over? Or how does it work? I don't know. I'm not an attorney, so I couldn't tell you. That's something for them, them and their attorneys, I would say.
I would, I would assume that the new owner.
I don't know. There was an existing easement, yeah. Easement goes with the D? That's what, that's what an attorney's for. See, I don't know though. I don't know how easements work as far as if you sell it for, I was sure you'd have easement with last year, but.
Well, there has to be a way cause I mean, the electric cost and stuff would have to have.
No matter if you bought both sides of the road, if somebody had an existing business or property. Surely the guy that still had easement to get into the property.
The easement should be recorded along with the, so if you have easement on your property, and usually they don't put like your. You know, like the city has an easement to access so much structure, um, you know, lanes, build your electricity. Those usually aren't something that you go see cause it's just understood to be for every property. But so for a shared road or how are we handling this bit of property? If homeowner A and homeowner B agreed to an easement and then homeowner P sells to X later on down the road. X still has to.
That's the one that said when you were like, use me, cause I, I talked, cause I was talking with assessors about making sure that was.
You hear that, the easement goes with the property to, to the landlord who's still on here, still. You just explained it.
Can you explain that again?
Yeah, sure. Um, so.
He'll bill you later.
He's sort of running perpetuity with the, with the, uh, deed of property or which easement is on. So. From what I was gathering, you have lot A, lot B, and you have an easement that is shared. So there are some agreements on how it's maintained and all of this. If B then sells to X later on, that easement goes on to the D that X buys and it continues in perpetuity if X sells to Z. The only way that that ends is if it's private easement, there's usually an agreement. If you violate the agreement, whichever party can sue for an injunction, usually not damages. Uh, also, you know, if you're talking about a road that's been existence for thirty years, the courts are usually not going to agree with the person coming in and saying, hey, I wanna get rid of this road. Unless there's really good reason.
Well, that's what I wanna avoid is someone blocking the road, preventing someone to get to their property.
If that road has existed for a long time, uh, the individual trying to destroy the road or end the easement is going to have a really uphill battle and they probably will not be successful. Keyword is probably. You never can predict what court will do.
Well, as, as long as that, that road's been around since day gone.
I would say the judge would follow the road. If it's been here thirty years, he's probably gonna go with it.
I think what would have to be shown is that like property owner A had extreme hardship put on them by the existence of the easement and that the other. Party to the easement isn't following the agreements. So like, I had an easement for one of my properties and it was that we had to maintain taking care of the, the shared road. You know, so like if it costs five thousand dollars, put down new gravel and even it out and make it look good, you know, I owe twenty-five hundred, the other guy owes twenty-five hundred.
Yes, my, my concern is, is, I don't, even though county hasn't maintained that road, uh, it is a county road. So.
It's a.
If the county hasn't abandoned the road, then all of that, it's actually pointless. The county takes over. Even if, even if they show that it's private, if the county's deemed a road, it's, county probably.
Yeah, I've, I've never been. Just by talking to the assessors, it's not sounding like a private road.
It's not sounding like a private road?
No, it's, it's a county road that we don't maintain anymore, but. He's, if, if that person's maintaining that road for the last several years. I don't wanna deal with a bunch of G S where they're blocking the road, preventing someone to get to their home. That's the only route out to get to the home. But if county, that's a county road, then that, that person is blocking the road. But what's the plans with that? I mean, are, is county going to do anything with that or is this person that?
You have to look and see what the.
So that's what I, I don't want, I, I don't wanna, I don't want someone to block the access.
Is this a problem that has been, has happened or is this a problem that's already happening and you take this?
Um, I, no, it's, I think it will, I think it will get worse depending on what answer I give.
I'd speak with Jeff as the county attorney. Um.
It's, it's not, it's not bad right now, but it.
I, I understand how neighbors can get. I get it. Um, and somebody's worried about not being able to access their home and another person's like, hey, I'm not talking to the workers coming over my lands. That's essentially what's happening.
Cause if. It's me driving around the road and I live down here. I, I went out to my, to my place, even though it's going through someone else's property, but that's a county road. I don't wanna be blocked from my own, is the way I see it. But if that road is going to be used.
As far as I know, Monod hasn't signed it out.
If that road is going to be used, even though it hadn't been used in twenty, thirty years, but it still shows a tiny road, then, then I'm in wrong.
I, I had this this fear that my year, my side of what's going on. Had a road on, was a road that the failed subdivision member actually made. But the city recognized it as a road, even though it never been used. But there was also an easement that was shared between my property and another property. My neighbor, so much wanted that extra little surplus land. They actually went to city hall. They got city hall to a fan that it was a road. We share this driveway and that's, and there's no evidence. And I just went down to the boarder deuce. There's an easement on my property. He goes, hi, well, I didn't know. It's one more easement on your property too. And when you purchase property, it's by everywhere. So if there's a registered one, that's the solution. You just say, hey, this is a civil matter. And you can't stop them from accessing this cause it's a registered one. If it's not, he can go to the boardmaster and. But it's mostly a civil matter and that's the only reason. And I just went to the wing of the police and handed them a copy of it.
Technically, like my road that I live on, it stops right there at my driveway, but technically it goes on past, over the top of that beam, but it's never been, it's never been built to the rest of it. But the, the track, I guess, of what you, goes to the, to the other properties, property line. It never filled in or, cause there wasn't any meat.
So, uh, if you're trying to get in front of it, you might just go ask the boarder deuce deeds and hold for it. That way you can see if that easement's there and then whoever calls, you can go, look, this is settled. You guys need to figure out how to get along and stop before this gets escalated to the point where there's a real issue.
So Noel Smith, that by ten o'clock, he may be going home, getting some sleep.
He didn't get home when we were done last night or this morning?
No, he, he stayed though. Four thirty-five o'clock.
Man, two was rough.
Oh, he went home then, but he came back. Cause he got another phone call from, uh, another city.
Well, I guess I'll go talk to the recorder and.
Too much fun down there after I get out here. I'll go down there too. I'm gonna pull, pull it get saved part of mine to take care of the road. I'll just go by the legit and see where that stops at.
Well, supposedly it goes up to J where you can access forty-four. It goes up around the mountain and forty-four. I've, I can't get past her, I, I can't get past the trailer. So I mean, I.
Well, over a period of time after that sawmill's been removed and stuff, I mean, disgraded down there and I mean, then there was a business. So now after they tore all this down, then that road goes right through the middle of where there used to be a sawmill and it was used every day for their business and now they're calling that a road. But over the years, I mean, back thirty, forty years ago, they, nobody's ever done anything through the middle of that sawmill property. I, I don't know. It's one of them deals where they have to do all, all the digging. Still probably won't come out and slide aside.
Do you have the address on that sheet?
She might be able to just look at it from the D there or the lot after it's got. Is there anything that I need to take up to Crocker or is this just for our writers or anything? Do we need to take a signed copy up to Crocker for this or?
Dave, did you make an extra copy?
Well, Jeff will be here shortly to.
Well, Jeff will be here shortly to.
Oh, he's still. Oh, okay.
You got it up there?
I will, once we get that, yes, cause I need to start taking inventory of that.
Radios?
Yeah, that's one I'm gonna make sure, and all that stuff.
Calling a vehicle from Tennessee to keep dirt last night, you thought me. You picked the weather, I think I'm in the middle of a tornado. You know, big hail falling, you had a car on the back of it, you say, where are you at? He goes, well, I just had a two curvy field, and I go, you better take time. He goes, it's moving my roll back of the vehicle up there, cause I can't see now, it just keeps going different ways, like, oh, so. He goes, when he got to the bridge at fifty-five, to get on fifty-five, he goes, there's fire crux everywhere, I said, yep. Called me, he was carrying the. I ain't got nowhere to go. I know we're writing cards early yesterday morning, dude, get ready, man, dump the mark.
What is left on business calendar for today's meeting?
Uh?
What, what business is left for today's meeting?
Nothing, we're done with everything.
They just sit here in case somebody comes here and has something to talk about, like maybe this guy.
Who, me? Yeah, actually, it's cause I'm already here, uh, Blackavages Church right across the street, it's like two foot by two foot. People keep going around, they're going through, can that get repaired? Where's um? It's on East Lawn, right across from Rockavages Church, it's all the left hand side, you're going downtown, they're always trying to go around there.
That'd be the city, homie.
What's that?
It's outside, it's outside.
Rockavages County, that's right there, Texas and. Well, East Lawn switches to Texas right there before Bales, is it Bales?
And it's at the.
At the corner of the church would be Texas and, um, that's the starting line. That one thing, so what is that? It goes down the hill.
Yeah, that's Twilight, well, then you got Missy Mountain back there too.
Oh, you, all the way down, you're up on the hill by the church though, right?
I'm talking about, right, yeah, every time I'm coming from Thousand Hills, there's cars always going around it, I just kinda just drop that, okay. And it's in my asphalt, yeah, it's right on the asphalt, and then you see some, looks like they did a ditch wedge or something, they got a wire sticking up like this, but it's been like that for a couple of months now, just sitting there, so I figured since you're here, I'll just. Oh yeah, right after Talon, right there on the left hand side.
Texas and Talon.
Right by uh, Burrows, taxi.
I'll go look at it.
Cool, appreciate it. Good.
I'll take care of it.
This is your opportunity to ask your question about roads, if you wanna ask them.
No, no, we already had that conversation, appreciate it.
Just wanted to give you the opportunity to get the answer officially, instead of what I know they'll tell you. I saved you guys some trouble by explaining a few questions that I'm sure you get all the time from constituents. Some things go better when a guy who's been sitting at the cable for twenty years says, what from you doesn't sound so good. There you go.
That's all she wrote.
I got words, you know, I got trial last week.
Be careful.
Remember, she said it on camera, he'll be out there today.
No, you're not gonna me.
I'll be out there, I'll be out there to get it, I'll go look at it. Forestland asphalt, you gotta see when they're a little started, they should be starting here this, within the next day or two.
I try, I try time, maybe my driveway, I try to time them when they're around there, so I avoid a P.
There you go, yeah.